The Desmond City, I'd like you to dress a little nicer if you're going to come to the Commission.
Um, I have a suit that I reserve for funerals.
You're asking the absolute worst person to do that.
Colleagues, you ready? All right, thank you. Good evening, I'd like to call the August 19th, 2010 Meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission to order. We start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask our city planner, Steve Ricola, to lead us in the pledge tonight.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and Israel with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and welcome to the meeting this evening. We'll start with presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the Commission. We actually do not have any requests to speak but for items later on the agenda, I just would like to request that folks, we have a number of folks here tonight, a number of requests already in to speak. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, there's a timer that will help you with that. Because we have so many requests to speak tonight, we'll be sticking to the timer and I'll remind you and ask you to wrap up. We also have civil discourse in the chamber, so please no applause, cat calls, those kinds of things. And we also, I request that if you can, could get your request to speak in before the end of the staff report, that just helps us with some time management issues, so it's just a preference. And that will move us to correspondence and staff communication from the city planner. Mr. Ricola.
Yes, thank you Chairman Sandin, members of the Commission and audience. Our city council met last night at a regular session and there were two items of interest that I wish to pass on to you. First of all, at a public hearing, they recommended moving forward to second reading, the zoning administrator amendments that we had been working on over the last couple months. And in addition, the city council took long last and moved forward the green building ordinance amendment to second reading as well. That had been an ordinance that obviously we've been working on some time and put a lot of effort and attention into. So you do have some correspondence in front of you tonight as well, and with that concludes my brief staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Ricola. Now we'll move to disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning commissioners are asked to share with each other and with the public any communications they've had on agenda items. So are there any disclosures to make before the meeting? No? No, I previously had had discussions with consultants on the item two, just to share that, but I disclosed that the last time this came before us. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have consideration approval of the minutes from August 5th. Are there discussion or a motion to approve?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the minutes.
Thank you, moved by Mr. Morzini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All aye with one abstention, Ms. Blackburn, thank you very much. We'll move on to our regular agenda, item number two, which is a public hearing on West Coast Recycling Conditional Use Permit. And just for folks who, thank you, for folks who haven't been with us before, just to give an overview of how the process works at a public hearing, we typically ask staff for guidance before we start and hear a staff report. So the staff have presented us with a report. We then ask the applicant to give a presentation if they wish, and then I'll open the public hearing, and that's when I'll ask folks who've requested an opportunity to speak to come up to this microphone here and address us. We don't have a dialogue back and forth, so what we are listening to the comments and taking note for the record. At the end, because we're planning, in our staff report planning to continue this, we'll close the public hearing and I'll ask for a motion to continue this item. So you'll, we'll receive public hearing, we'll receive public comment tonight, but you won't expect to have a discourse back and forth this evening. So just so folks know what to expect with regard to item, this item. So with that, I'd like to move to if there's staff direction for us and a staff report.
Yes, the only direction for you is that the last planning commission meeting, which was at August 5th, a workshop on this item, the planning commission raised several issues regarding this project, and tonight both the applicant and the staff will be responding to them as part of the presentation. So with that, I would just turn it over to David Tilly, senior planner.
Thank you, Mr. Ricola, Mr. Tilly.
Good evening Chairman Sandin and members of the planning commission. As you stated, we are here in a public hearing regarding the West Coast Recycling Project. The entitlement request that is a conditional use permit for a metals recycling facility proposed at the Port of West Sacramento as a north working terminal. Project would be about, on about 15 acres and would accept metals for shredding that would ultimately be exported by a ship into other areas to actually be reused and turned back into steel for construction. As you mentioned, the project was actually held in a workshop before the commission back on July 15th, and the commission asked some questions at that stage, and we responded to some, and then tonight the applicant's presentation, we tailored to answer some of those questions that remained outstanding from our last meeting. Since the workshop, the project's environmental document, which was a consistent of a negative declaration and a Fonzie under NIPA, was circulated, and since the comment period closed on the 13th of this month, we have received numerous comments. The ones that we've received on time for your packets have been attached, and then this week we have received also another very large comment letter, which we provided to you in a memo this evening, and a couple of other letters we also received, those are part of your packet. We also received a comment letter just shortly before the meeting tonight, we do not have time to copy that and distribute it this evening, but we will be providing that to you subsequent to the meeting. Tonight, the applicant does have a brief PowerPoint for you, and so we would ask that you entertain hearing his presentation, and then after that, if you have an issue of any clarifying questions for staff or the applicant, we would ask you to take public comment. Once the public comment periods, public comments are over, we would ask that you would close the public hearing and then continue this item to a date uncertain. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Any questions before I open the public hearing and ask to hear from the applicant? All right, we'll open the public hearing, and if the applicant has a presentation for us, thank you.
I always thought that was so cool last time I had to do it. Thanks again for your time. I thought tonight, we'll spend most of our brief period of time answering some of the questions from the feedback that we got from you last meeting. I thought I'd start out first, just...
Excuse me, would you, could you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. I did this last time. I'm David Gigerich, President of West Coast Recycling, here tonight to talk about our project. First, I'm just going to quickly go through a couple of the economic and environmental benefits of our project to West Sacramento, and then my associate Lynn Keck's going to come up and speak more specifically to the two, I would say, kind of open questions from last time, specifically about the water and about the type of fencing or visual shielding that we are going to be doing, so we have more detail about that. First, just touching again on the different economic benefits, it will be over $25 million investment by our company into the port facility at West Sacramento. Will create at minimum 60 new jobs that will be involved in, you know, a green type of industry with metal recycling, and we'll be utilizing a port facility that today is obviously underutilized. Touching quickly on the environmental benefits of what we're doing, obviously the metals recycling business, over 98% of all steel is recycled, as we touched on last time, what surprises most people is actually that over 70%, nearly 70%, I should say, of all new steel comes from recycled metals. So this went from in the mid 70s, when it was about 15% to almost 70% today. So it's a very viable, growing business economically, and most importantly on this side environmentally. We'll be eliminating literally thousands of truck trips between Sacramento and West Sacramento in the Bay Area, so from an environmental impact of the entire region, it's going to be very positive. And we're going to be able to do this in a new state-of-the-art facility that's going to utilize the most advanced air scrubbing systems, water systems, and water capture system, which leads me into what Lynn is going to be coming up to discuss, which is we have a closed-loop water system, and there was a couple comments on this last time to get a little more specific of sort of the what-ifs, what if the 70-year flood, 100-year flood, those sorts of things that we'll be touching on, and then also the different types of shielding or options we have for the wall in the front. With that, I'll let Lynn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Lynn Keck, I'm the project manager for West Coast Recycling, and we did, as David mentioned, we had a number of questions, technical, we've attempted to bring it down to something that's easy to understand, particularly one of the questions that Commissioner Leibig asked was about our statement that we were a closed system, but he saw valves that would allow us to discharge water. So at first, I'm going to attempt to explain that. The diagram that you see up now shows the normal operation of the system, and any water that falls on the four acres closest to the shredder, plus anything that's run through the process, will be collected and continuously recirculated. We'll size that tank so that we can capture all the rainfall for an entire, for the majority of the seasons over the last 70 years. Also, we've got it sized so that if we get a significant 24-hour event, we'll be able to capture that water, so that while we're operating and under normal conditions, all that water will stay within the tank. Go on to the next slide, we'll talk about... Okay. Now, one, two, back up. Okay, that's the one. In the event that we have what we call an extreme rainfall event, 24-hour storm, 10-year flood, or 10-year, 10-year 24-hour storm, what we will do is capture the water for the first approximately one inch of rainfall, and this is used commonly in stormwater systems in order to get the worst of any contaminants, you know, there was, Commissioner Leibig was concerned about things like small amounts of residual from a, from the cooling systems in automobiles, or small amounts of brake fluid, those kind of things that would be left after they were drained. The idea behind this system is, or this idea is that as that flushes over the equipment, the equipment, the scrap being fed in and the scrap coming out of the system, if there is a small residual, it's flushed off in the first part of the rainfall. We'll put all that into the tank. Then if the rain continues to the point where we wouldn't be able to capture it in the tank, what will happen is we'll shut the shredder down, we'll seal the closed process system up, and at that point, we can divert the stormwater into a pond that we have on site that's still under our control. And we'll then, and between the bathtub, we call it the bathtub, around the shredder, plus the stormwater pond, each of those should be able to control, contain between a half million and a million gallons, so we'll have between one and two million gallons of storage where we can hold that water when we're not operating. Once it's in the storm pond, we're still down, everything's sealed up, so now we can take that water and we can put it through the treatment system that we mentioned. So we'll run through a testing station and filtration, testing station, and then we can figure out which system we can deliver it into. Our preferred will be to the sanitary system, so that we will not go to the storm drain unless we're required to. The only time we'd be required is if the sanitary people find our water to be too clean. They won't accept storm quality water into the sanitary system. So our preference will always be if we're discharging, we're going to go into the sanitary system. There it will be properly treated and under their control. But if our tests show that we're too clean, then we would be required to discharge the storm, not our preference. That storm drain, and it's mentioned down here at the bottom, the RD 900 Open Channel is a wetland that runs along Route 50. Last thing is during, during very wet winters, we may run into a case where we have too much water in the tank, if we've captured too many of the earlier rainfalls. Again, if that happens, we'll be shutting down, and at that point, we'll go through the same kind of iteration where the water will go first to the storm pond, be tested, filtered, and preferentially discharged into the sanitary system. Again, we're required by the sanitary people, if it's too clean, after we've done our filtration, they won't take it, so then we would have to go into storm. But we've got a pretty high bar to prove that it's that clean that it meets stormwater quality. I hope that responds, and we've offered to talk to Commissioner Leibig offline to explain that same thing and take any questions he has, unfortunately since he's not here tonight. The second question we had was around shielding. So we showed this diagram the last time, and on the diagram you can see some of the equipment. In fact, one of the things I want to point out is far over here to the left, there's like a triangular pile, that's the finished, that's the finished shredded product. There's also a stack sticking up right here, that's the scrubber. Those two things, I'd like you to keep, keep an eye on because we're going to refer to them in the next couple slides, so they'll, they will be things that we're talking about in our sightlines. So if we go to the, and this is just a reference of where those things are, so you can see that, that triangular pile way over here at the left, that's the finished product waiting to go on a ship, and the only time that it would be that full would be about once a month, right before a ship arrived would be the only time the pile would be that large. And the scrubber is about in the center, and it's hard to see my cursor, but right next to the shredder is where the top of the scrubber stack sits. Now if I go to the next slide, we have a sightline. So we've taken a theoretical person, six foot four tall, standing on the opposite side of Industrial Boulevard, and we say that his eyesight, or his eyes are six feet off the ground. So we've taken the angle and looked at all that equipment. What we found is if we put a wall or a fence at the property limit, that wall or fence would need to be 14-foot high in order to hide all of the finished product, all of the unloading operation, the trucks that are bringing in the Hulk cars, the actual grapple that's picking them up, so that with a 14-foot-high fence, one would not see anything that, they would never ever see a Hulk, even when we're putting it into our equipment, they wouldn't see the finished product. So this is just the reference, the only things that would show up would be the top of one conveyor and the top of the scrubber. So like the rest of the port, you would tend to see stationary equipment, but you won't see anything moving. Just for reference, we, we looked at a number of different other angles and different heights, and we, we don't believe that's, you know, we looked at how tall it'd have to be to hide all the equipment, don't think that that is appropriate, and we also looked at shorter heights to see what would be exposed if we were to use a 11-foot or an eight-foot-high fence at that same position. So that's all there for your reference. Since we, we got the sense that the important thing was to have no visible Hulks or junk cars at any time, what we have on the next slide is what we're, one of the proposals that we have, which would be a masonry wall, concrete block wall, of eight-foot tall with a slided fence on top. Now this wall is almost identical to the one that's currently, just recently constructed on the exit of Route 50. If you come off of, if you come off of Business 80 or Route 50 and go towards the port, this wall is right along that exit. It's, it's about an eight-foot-tall wall, and it has this kind of pattern, we've used different kinds of block, brown and green, in order to break up the pattern and make it look like an interesting pattern. Above it would be a fence with slats in it, the slats can be a variety of colors that look like wood, but are usually plastic slats in a vertical arrangement. The other option would be something that's actually used in the, in the city right now, in the, in the area they call Lowe's, the Lowe's Shopping Center, opposite to Pompidesi Bridge, behind the Streets of London Pub, there is a fence that is exactly this manufacturer, I don't think the color is the same, and the colors can vary, but we would use this series of concrete fence which looks like cedar, looks like a cedar shake type fence. This is also shown as a 14-foot-high fence, and shown in relation to the trees that are in the same area. So those two options are presented for your consideration. What we would propose to do is make either the fence or the wall 1,100-foot long, and we believe that from the street, from the opposite side of the street, that it would not, you would not see anything moving, you wouldn't see Hulk cars, you wouldn't see what's on the end of the grapple crane, or you wouldn't see the cars as they go up into the shredder. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, any clarifying questions before we, before we ask the public members, members of the public who were wishing to speak? All right, what I'll do is I'll read the, the name of the person I'm asking to come up, followed, so the next person in line can get prepared, I'll also read that name. I apologize in advance, if I, I'm going to do my best with pronunciation, my best guess. If you could though, when you come to the microphone, actually start by telling us your name and with the correct pronunciation, that would be really helpful to us. So we're starting with Peter Bianchini, followed by Kevin Edinburgh.
Hi, I'm Peter Bianchini, a 52-year resident here at West Sacramento and a 56-year resident of Yolo County. I first started working at the port in February of 72. I've worked here and spent my money here, and so do my brothers and my friends, and my sons, and grandson now. So this is good for West Sacramento, I love to see it, I love to see jobs come here, I'd like to see jobs everywhere, but at least we're coming here. This company, if they can hire some of us, they won't be sorry. And that's pretty much what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bianchini. Mr. Kevin Edinburgh, followed by Michael, it's either Pina or Pigna.
Hi, Kevin Edinburgh. Thank you for pronouncing that correctly, a lot of people can't pronounce my last name. I don't have much to say, I'm a member of Local 17 for 20 years now, and I'd like to see this project established to create new jobs in West Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Pina.
Michael Pina, followed by Larry Faccio.
I'm Michael Pina, I've been a longtime resident also, and love to see this company come in here, you know, I'm definitely for it, I've been in the union 25 years, and went to high school here in West Sacramento, and it's, I think it's good for us, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Larry Faccio, followed by Frank Padalano.
Larry Faccio, Port of Sacramento, ILW Local 17. I've been at the Port of Sacramento for 35 years. I've seen a lot of business come in and a lot of business leave, and we need business here. We are hurting out there. I used to direct up to 45 people, and now I'm down to three or four, and we need this work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Faccio. Frank Padalano, followed by Denise Seals.
Thank you, my name is Frank Padalano. I represent SSA Pacific as well as Crescent Wharf and Warehouse. We are the managing terminal operator at the Port of Sacramento right now. We employ Crescent Wharf and Warehouse employees, Local 17, and we are completely in favor of this project. These gentlemen right here from West Coast Recycling, we do have a letter of intent that they will use Crescent Wharf and Warehouse labor, and with our record for the past four years going into our fifth year now at the port, we've established ourselves as a leader in, in running this port, and we want to continue to do that, and we do have a fantastic labor force to allow us to do that. So SSA Crescent Wharf and Warehouse, we are definitely in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Denise Seals, followed by Jim Martinez.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Denise Seals, I'm the President and CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. To restate, the Port of West Sacramento is prime industrial zoned area. Projects of this quality bring state-of-the-art green technology, not only in its product, but in its plant design, which has been successfully modeled in several other states already. This project is self-contained, it gathers storm drain runoff and reuses. There's minimum impact to local businesses through careful project design. This project creates 60 long-term jobs in a community that currently, our community that currently enjoys 20% unemployment, as well as $25 million in capital construction, and it increases the ship traffic at the port by an estimated one ship per month. The fact that they stated earlier has always really run a chord with me, 70% of steel made in the United States, made by American workers in the United States, comes from scrap metal. Sound, modern products of this nature and projects of this nature support jobs all over our country. Sound, modern projects of this nature located on prime industrial property in our city support the vision of the port and the economy of this city through business-to-business sales tax and jobs. And as a resident, not speaking for the chamber, but as a resident of West Sacramento, I'll call out the elephant in the room. Quite frankly, you could measure the financial value of this project by the sudden influx of concern by persons living in or near the city of West Sacramento and other persons and organizations that have an interest in suddenly protecting our environment, suddenly protecting our aesthetic. Really? You know, follow the money. Who pays for this type of work that you have in your, you know, these public documents in your packet? What's the real interest here? Some close examination of some of those products in your packet may give you some of that information. You know, as a resident, please, have all your concerns addressed, have all the concerns of every resident addressed, but also as a resident, don't let this opportunity get delayed, get snowballed, get buried in paperwork, designed to do just that, because frankly, there is both an expression and a strategy. That is, if you can't dazzle them with brilliance, and I have every confidence that you won't be baffled in this situation. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Seals. Jim Martinez, followed by Enrique Baiza.
Good evening. My name is James A. Martinez. I'm the owner of J and M Recycling, located at 2205 Rice Avenue in West Sacramento. I have reviewed the information provided regarding item number two, the West Coast Recycling Conditional Use Permit for the West Sacramento City webpage. I own a recycling business that operates and has been in business for 18-plus years. It has provided the citizens of West Sacramento with jobs, opportunities, aided the city with West Sacramento cleanup. with West Sacramento cleanup, day events, and has always cooperated with local law enforcement agencies. I believe that the council should not approve this permit without additional information to address the concerns of the public and local agencies. The initial proposal does not clearly define the scope of business and the impact to the surrounding residential, commercial, and industrial areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Enrique Baiza, followed by Samuel Heng.
Thank you for allowing us to comment on this not-so-green project. By the way, I'm sorry, Enrique Baiza. In our written public comments, attachment number seven, as Sam Heng and myself have stated, there are very dangerous and explosive aspects concerning this proposal and that have been not addressed, and that will be next to impossible to overcome. What we would like to add today are four additional comments. Number one, based on the inadequate job that your environmental consultant did as demonstrated in the public comments that were entered, we as a Sacramento taxpayer would like for the city to replace them or ask for a refund. Number two, we would like West Coast Recycling Group and all of its companies nationwide that are affiliated with them to submit to the city three things: the names of the companies, the percentage of ownership in the different companies, and a three-to-five-year environmental compliance history, so we know who we're dealing with, because a beautification, beautification screen wall, which will not stop the high winds that pick up toxic fluff that's going to surround the community, the businesses, the solar company next door, the waterways, is just totally inadequate. Number three, we would like for the city to provide public comments to the current and future surrounding businesses as part of this project. There is a petroleum tank farm that's going to be supposedly installed there. As you saw in my public comments, there's tremendous amounts of fires associated with these shredding companies. What happens when there are vapors up in the air and something catches on fire in these hot, one-hundred-day days? What you guys have provided was that West Sacramento Fire only has nineteen personnel. This year, a recycling facility in Sacramento had a fire. Eighty fire personnel showed up, eighty of them. There's nineteen people, firemen, here in West Sacramento. This project, number four, this project after further analysis by the city should just be terminated. Thank you. We can't wait to hear what the city's additional analysis will be found in about, what, six months or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baiza. Samuel Heng, followed by John Mendoza.
Hello, Samuel Heng. I'm a resident of Yolo County here for the last five years. Grew up here, went to school here in Davis, UC Davis, stayed the area, loved the area here. I'm definitely concerned about the project and especially the environmental impacts, although, I mean, sixty jobs seems like a lot of jobs, especially today. I mean, who doesn't want a job today? But looking at, you know, Sacramento County, Yolo County, and all the residents in the, you know, five to ten area square mile, I mean, what's going to be the impact of the surrounding people just next door here? The long-term studies and the wind patterns, where these chemicals are going to land, I'm really concerned. I'm so concerned that I think that there's going to be a point where if this project does move forward, that I will definitely move out of Yolo County and the surrounding area and take my family somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heng. John Mendoza, followed by Robert Hanson.
John Mendoza, I've been a resident of Yolo County for seventeen years now. I have four generations through Local Seventeen. We are at a time when we've lost lots and lots of jobs within the last eleven months, approximately, this is a guesstimate, of three hundred and fifty jobs. So fifty or sixty jobs to come back, I feel, would help us out a lot, whether, you know, we get this or not. We sure would enjoy to have jobs back in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza. Robert Hanson, followed by Janet Donahoe.
Hi, I wasn't here to speak, but I guess I got asked to. But I used to live in West Sac about seventeen years ago, and it'd be an honor and a pleasure to come back and get involved in this project. And you get the money coming to the community and jobs, and these gentlemen here, we're talking about environmental safety, I think so you gotta look at sort of the unsafety parts of it, but thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Janet Donahoe, followed by Tim Campbell.
Hi, my name is Janet Donahoe. I'm a new resident of West Sacramento, and I think this project could bring a lot of good jobs. People will be spending money in our communities. And I have a question. What group of citizens got together fifty thousand dollars in seven days to print this seventy-page report? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Donahoe. Tim Campbell, followed by Victor Romero.
Tim Campbell, ILW Local Seventeen, chief steward at the Port of Sacramento. I met with this company often. I've talked with them often. I've talked with other representatives from other unions. We encourage and endorse this company to come out there and help stimulate the economy. Talk about truck drivers coming in, talk about money being spent. Look at the ripple effect, from the grocery houses to more people eating more food, to coming in all the way down to keeping people working to supply benefits for people's families. The ripple effect for this is catastrophic. We endorse this. We want this to go through as expeditiously as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Victor Romero, followed by Patrick Solori.
I'm Victor Romero. I would like to see this project come in, if you can. I've been here thirty-one years at the Port of Sacramento, it's the lowest I've seen it, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Patrick Solori, followed by David Martinez.
Chairperson Sandin, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Patrick Solori, speaking on behalf of community advocates for West Sacramento. I'd like to briefly, very briefly, speak about this project. As a preliminary issue, I want to say that we did submit a recent comment letter on the thirteenth, which I believe was recently submitted or transmitted to you all. We are not against, at all, against a metal recycling project. This is a good location for it. Metal recycling is a green technology. It's a green industry. With that said, the environmental review for this project has been less than satisfactory. Too many questions remain. Our letter outlines many of those. I won't even try to summarize the issues, but I do want to emphasize that unless these issues are disclosed in an adequate document, there is no basis to impose feasible mitigation measures and conditions of approval that will make sure the residents of the city and property owners, adjacent property owners, aren't unduly burdened by this project. Unless the analysis is done, the conditions of approval, there will be no basis to impose these conditions of approval. And for example, just the presentation by the applicant this evening demonstrates that there is still more information that needs to be learned. This information about the shielding, the information about the industrial water processing, all of that information needs to be in the environmental document circulated for public review. It shouldn't be provided on the eve of project approval. And on that note, while it's easy to criticize comment letters as raising hyper-technical comments and theoretical environmental issues, I would like to note that many of the comments we raised in our comment letter were issues raised by city staff itself, in particular the industrial stormwater system, in particular the failure to analyze use of the main port entrance. The Air District also paralleled many of our comments regarding air impacts. PG&E also raised similar comments as us about analyzing the whole of the action. So we urge the Planning Commission to require additional study so that this project, which is a good project, can be analyzed, disclosed, so that the impacts can be evaluated, mitigated, and proper conditions of approval will be implemented. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Solori. David Martinez, followed by Derek Peterson.
Hi, I'm Dave Martinez, a fifty-year resident of West Sacramento. I worked for CNF for twenty-two years. Eleven months ago, they closed. We lost over three hundred jobs, and right now I'm working temporarily at the port, and there's not much work. And I've lived here all my life. I've seen more businesses leave West Sac than come in. West Sac is stagnant. We need this business. I hope we get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Derek Peterson, followed by Robert Gaborn. Gaborn?
Good evening. Derek Peterson, president of Longshore Division of the ILW, forty-three years old, lived here all my life. My dad was the first president of the union in that port in sixty-four. So we've been around for a little while. What I like to remember or remind everybody is when this was a combined city in West Sacramento and Sacramento governance, we couldn't do anything, couldn't get nothing done to allow this port to grow. Now, since the governance changes happened, it's our city, it's our port, we could do what we want with it. We can make it be less financially burdensome on the city of West Sac by taking on projects like this. This also is a project that these people are bringing their own money, and that's huge. We don't have to spend our money to upgrade the port or the city. These people are going to do this for us. Sixty jobs is a lot of work. It's a lot of people going to work, a lot of people spending money in our towns. I'm proud of our town, proud of our port, and please, I hope you support this.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Robert Gaborn. Gabors? Hope I'm pronouncing it correctly? No?
I was not coming.
Okay. Kurt Laudenschlager, followed by Tim Schott.
Yes, I'm also a member of the ILW Local Seventeen, and I pretty much agree with what's been said already, and I think with given the things that have been going on in Stockton recently, why couldn't we make that happen here? Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Schott, followed by Jeff, and it looks like Lopez, perhaps?
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Tim Schott, and I'm the Executive Secretary for the California Association of Port Authorities, which is comprised of the state's eleven commercial publicly-owned ports. As I'm sure you're aware, California is a major gateway for products entering and leaving the United States, with nearly forty percent of the cargo entering the U.S. coming into California ports, and nearly thirty percent of the nation's exports flowing through ports in the Golden State. According to the California Maritime, sorry, California Marine and International Transportation System Advisory Council, port activities employ some half a million people in California and generate an estimated seven billion dollars in state and local tax revenues annually. Many of the goods moving through California's ports are industrial and post-consumer secondary materials, with California Trade and Commerce Agency, when they used to exist anyway, estimating that secondary materials typically exceed a billion dollars annually. California's public ports are committed to environmentally sound maritime practices and developing environmentally friendly port operations. We believe that the project before you will bring vital jobs to the region in troubled economic times, and will do so while employing state-of-the-art design, emissions controls, water capture, and reuse practices. We believe projects such as this can provide sustainability, contribute to the efficient use of the state's seaports, public assets well-positioned to create jobs, remove vehicles from our congested highways, and take advantage of appropriately-zoned and underutilized existing water transportation systems and facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schott. Jeff L., followed by Dan Ramos.
Jeff Loper, Local Seventeen.
Thank you.
In this day of housing tracts and strip malls going as far as you can see in every direction, I believe we need a good balance of good-paying jobs to help support that network. And this city is sitting in a unique situation to have a port. A lot of other cities would love to be in that situation, and to leave the port in a mothball state when we have a good thing coming in would be a shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Loper. Dan Ramos is our last request to speak this evening.
Save the best for last. Good evening, everybody. Dan Ramos representing Harbor Business Center, Ramco Enterprises, and I guess we are a neighbor to this project. We are directly across the street with our investment, our office parked there, and I just wanted to go on record and let you know, actually, back in July fifteenth, we've got notice of the previous public hearing, and we did have some concerns about this project. And we were able to convene. I called Mike Lukin, and right away, we had an opportunity to meet with the plant proponents back in July. It was a very good meeting, convened all, most, the majority of the property owners in the neighborhood there, and they came, and we had a really good session, and we outlined some of the concerns that we had, wanted to understand what the facility was. It was an excellent meeting, really got a good understanding of what was going on there. And you can see there was not a lot of property owners here tonight because of that. We feel very comfortable with this project. I see tonight they already addressed a lot of our concerns, which was screening. I have a two-story office, building looks this way, and really appreciate the wall and appreciate any enhanced landscape that go on there. We talked about traffic getting out of the area, and a lot of it's not so much there as that we, as a city, have got to really start planning. The traffic comes in industrial and it's going out to Southport Industrial Park, we got a lot of traffic going to go out that way, including our industrial there. As we switch this main gate of the port, a lot of the users in the port, including them, they very much said they were very cooperative. If we can start whatever we can do to mitigate and get most of that traffic in the port, at least to the west side of town, to use the enterprise, it'd be very good. A little bit concerned about Beacon Boulevard in terms of any traffic you might want to cut through there and do that, because that's more of a business park area there, so that's Beacon's kind of a concern for us there. But overall, we like this project, and I want to go back a little history here. I got, in a minute, I'm trying this real quick, because I've been at this a long time. This goes way back, Yolo County days, when we had, the port was first zoned for heavy industrial. This is the type of industry that was always there. We, as neighbors to the north of that, understand it. We are the supportive industries to that. They might have their offices or support industries there. So this has all been planned for thirty years in this community, this type of use at the port, very supportive of it. Now, I want to switch, get my economic development hat on. It's real important. This project's important to our community, it's important to the port. You know, nowadays, we have so much, you know, you hear about regulation, regulation. This is it. You guys, your body here tonight, you guys have experienced and seen a lot of these over the years, and these type of things, and you are very competent to make a decision tonight on a mitigated deck regarding this project. This does not have to go to full EIR or whatever like that. This is always planned, always accounted for. We've worked with our zoning ordinance to get building performance standards. This is what this is addressing tonight. So this is a good project, and I hope that it goes forward. It's very important for this community. I haven't lived here as long as Pete Bianchini back there. I'm about two years behind him, but we both lived in a neighborhood upwind from the port. We're still here today. Everything's fine. This is important. Please pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have, I apologize, there were some duplicates with names, and so I had a Tim Campbell and a Timothy Campbell, so I'd like to ask Timothy Campbell to come up. Thank you very much. You can lower the podium. There's a little switch on your right. It'll come, the podium will come down towards you if you push it down. There you go.
Hi, my name is Jared Campbell, and I'm Tim Campbell, Tim Campbell's son of a member of Local Seventeen, and I think it would be a big help for this recycle plant to come out, because it would be a great help for people and their jobs, and when my dad was laid off for ten months, we had a hard time paying bills, and then again, it would be a huge help for this job, because it would help a lot of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. All right, those are all the requests to speak. I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission, looking for action or any small... action or any small questions or actions.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to continue this item to a date uncertain. I'd like to make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Morzini to continue the item until a date uncertain. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Galvane. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I heard unanimous consent on that, so that item will be continued until a date uncertain. Thank you very much for your input this evening. We'll move to item number three, which is a public hearing. Pause. Not a break. We're pausing. All right, we'll continue on with item number three, which is a public hearing on American Tower Corp. conditional use permit, major modification. That will be presented to us by Mr. Tilly. And just a reminder that this will come to us in the public hearing format, so we'll follow along with how we typically conduct those hearings. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you very much. We are here, as you stated, in a public hearing regarding a major modification to an existing conditional use permit for American Tower Corporation. This project addresses an existing lattice tower that's located at 4340 South River Road in the southeast village of our city. This particular tower was first approved by the planning commission back in June of 1994 and was subsequently constructed and has been in operation ever since. Also, since that time, the commission has approved various colocations for other wireless carriers on this tower. Recently, the city was approached by another potential colocatee wanting to locate on this tower, and on our research related to the use permit, specifically to the tower, it was apparent that that use permit, where the conditions were written, was, could have been interpreted that that use permit may have expired. There was a specific condition placed on that, on that original use permit that specified that the term of operation for the tower would be 10 years or to whenever development activity was experienced in that area. Certainly understand the intent of the condition, but the way it was worded at that time did leave it room to some interpretation that there was either a specific time limit or it was indefinite until such time as development activity started to occur. As the commission as well as where, the southeast village has not yet begun development, much like some of the other villages have. And so tonight, we are proposing to modify that particular use permit to allow as much as a five-year time extension for American Tower to continue that tower's operation and to also allow for additional colocates to go on the tower should they desire to do so. No changes are proposed to the tower at this time in terms of height or its bulk, and we're not entertaining any colocates on it at this meeting, although there, we do have one application for a colocation that is pending your action this evening. As part of this effort, city staff, along with American Tower, have negotiated what we're calling a memorandum of understanding, and that is a draft that is attached to your staff report this evening. The purpose of the MOU is to attempt to set now so that when, someday, when development does start to occur out there, which will happen eventually, that there's a clear understanding at now, at this time, as terms of what will need to happen at such time. And we are planning, trying to plan ahead so that it's clear on all the parties and the intent is known, so that once bulldozers start to go, when houses start to spring up out in the southeast village, that it's very clear what the city's intent was and what American Tower's obligations are related to that. We don't, we're not seeking action from the commission specifically on the MOU tonight. That will be executed by the city manager, but many of the conditions or provisions of the MOU have been, also been translated into the recommended conditions for you this evening. Regarding the conditions, I had provided you a memo regarding some of those conditions and potentially deleting some of those tonight. We would like to retract that this evening on advice of the city attorney, and it would be our recommendation that if the planning commission were to approve the use permit modification, that the conditions remain as written in your staff report. So with that, I'd happy to close my comments on this matter. The applicant is here this evening also, and will be ready to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Any questions? Otherwise, I'll open the public hearing.
I'd like to ask.
Mr. Moore, I look like, you look like you might have a question, Mr. Moore.
David, I don't see the memo of understanding.
It is attachment number four. It's short. It's only about, you know, two pages plus the signatures. I do have it on my copy of the report. If you don't have it, I apologize.
Okay. I didn't realize that that's what it was, because it said that we were going to have to wait for it. So I, okay, I apologize to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other clarifying questions? Otherwise, we'll open the public hearing and ask the applicant if the applicant would like to speak. Sorry, Mr. Tilly, did you say he did?
Well, I said he's available.
Available, okay. So the public hearing's open. There are no requests to speak. Any questions of the applicant while we have the public hearing open? Hearing none?
I do, just a kind of a comment. I'd imagine there would be, this would have brought up, been brought up if there were any question, but conditions seven and eight impose some timelines once development starts, and I'm hoping that we're providing adequate time once development starts to find a new location and to be able to maintain service, cellular service in that vicinity at a different location. Has that been discussed?
Yeah, those particular conditions have, and the timeframes have been more or less replicated from the MOU that we have negotiated, and American Tower has executed that MOU as of this week, so we're confident that those conditions are appropriate in this case.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morzini. Mr. Moore has the one.
Open the hearing to the open?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yep. You're welcome to respond. You can raise the podium to, by your left.
Buck Rogers, West Sacramento resident. The towers are on my mom's estate's property. There's another tower there. What do they plan to do with that down the road? It doesn't have the same conditions as this tower does when it was put up. Just a question. And also, I think the city has plans to move that tower onto maybe their property down the road, so might keep that into consideration too. That's where they want to move it.
Thank you.
I think that should be against the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Thank you. David, I noticed that in, Ron kind of has brought it up already, but we, this is kind of different conditions than we normally have. And I, I kind of had the same concern, I guess a little bit of a concern, when I was reading this. And I was going that if we know that somebody's going to start construction out there, shouldn't we be telling these people that it's getting started and not get down to such a tight timeframe that we're building homes already? But I mean, once they start building roads, which takes a long time, I just didn't quite understand the actual contact we're going to make with the applicant here when it starts. I mean, I know the idea, the end is when homes come, they're going to move along, but I didn't understand the contact part of it.
Yeah, that's, that is part of the, part of the agreement that's, that has been executed by American Tower. We certainly recognize that a relocation would be a fairly substantive effort on behalf of American Tower, and so we wanted to try to provide as much lead time as possible on that to commence those activities. Now, we also recognize that given the state of the property out there now and the infrastructure needs to, you know, get it ready for, because what we're really getting at is when houses start to come out of the ground.
Right.
And so we recognize that that will be a, there'll be quite a bit of legwork to be done before that period comes, so there will be likely years' notice that that is on the near-term horizon based on the level of infrastructure construction that will need to happen out there.
Well, I think that was my comment, is, you know, once we start the infrastructure, it still takes a year or two to complete it. That's really when we should notify them that things are starting out there, but they have till 50 homes are built before they actually have to be gone. I was just concerned about the upfront timing of it, more than...
If I may respond to that, Commissioner Moore, if you look at the memorandum of understanding, page two of three, the top subsection B studies, it provides that within 90 days of the city deeming an application for development containing a minimum of 50 residential units complete, that American Tower must prepare or commence studies of replacement locations and designs. So certainly, that was contemplated, and it's included in the MOU, and it certainly is acknowledging the fact that these activities should be occurring well before development does.
Okay, and I guess that's kind of how I read that a little bit, and then I was concerned because it got down to 50 homes. So as long as everybody's happy, I'm happy, but I just wanted to make sure we were all talking, no, not till we start building homes, but before that, way before that.
Yes, certainly, certainly those efforts would need to begin, you know, long before homes start to sprout out of the ground.
Any other questions from the commissioners? And Mr. Tilly, did you, would you like to respond to the owners, if it's appropriate questions or comments?
Well, yes.
If it only pertains to this, or the permit before us, that, if it does.
Well, certainly, you know, the amendment, I mean, excuse me, the MOU does include at least a consideration of relocating on the property, to sell onto, the tower onto city property. Doesn't mean that has to happen or will happen. It is just a statement in there that it's something that would be considered at that time, but certainly, there are no formal plans or agreements of that nature at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly.
What about the other tower?
Oh, there is, there is another tower that is right next door to this one. It is owned by AT&amp;T, so it is under a separate permit and separate owner, so we would address, be addressing that one on a, in a separate manner.
Maybe I could add something to that. David, seems like the other tower in question was permitted before we had established standards. I think that's what Mr. Rogers is getting, getting at, that the condition with residential development wasn't established until we established an ordinance regarding cellular towers. I think that's what he's talking about.
Actually, both towers predate the city's wireless policy. The prior tower, the AT&amp;T tower, I believe was approved like in 1989, and then this one came later in 1994. So both do predate not only the wireless policy, they predate the framework plan. And in some, in the case of the first one, they even predate the general plan. So that is one that we are, will be addressing in some way, shape, or form on, to a similar manner. And this was a topic that was raised by American Tower as well, is to be, we're obviously really interested in fairness between the two, the two towers, since the issue really is similar between the two. But that one would be, need to be handled through a separate process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. Mr. Kelly? No. Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jim Kelly with American Tower. I just want to, first of all, start off by thanking David that took this project over from our case planner, who is no longer with the city, and I'm sorry to see that the city is also suffering the effects of the economy. We have had an application in with the city since pretty much the beginning of the year, and what even triggered that was finding out that a co-locating company that I think will be before you in, if not the next meeting, the one after that, and they've been in with the city application process since before that time. So we're hopeful that they will receive, I think, a prompt decision as well, and a favorable one for a co-location. I just want to also address the fact that David's been very easy to work with. We've came together with a large company that I work for in a memorandum of understanding, I think in record time. I don't know how long it takes for you guys to do it, but this has definitely been one for the record, but we think we started talking at the end of July. And so in a matter of just several weeks, we were able to kind of hammer through the biggest points. Something that is not addressed in the MOU, but I just want on the record, is the level of fairness that I think is important for perception, in that the AT&amp;T tower, albeit was approved five years earlier in '89, does not have a condition for coming back for a term of a CUP. So I'm a bit perplexed what mechanism the city would enact to create the process legally for them to have to face a potential MOU or eventual replacement as well. It doesn't make sense to have two towers there, require one to move, and have the potential area developers be burdened with an unstealth and a tower in the same location that we're at. So it's an important point. It shouldn't be a part of the MOU, because it's a different, it's a different point that's not related directly to us, but in the level of business fairness, it does seem a bit of a stretch to see how they can be required to come back before the commission. David and I didn't really want to focus too much on that, because we wanted to get the MOU hammered out for us, but I just want to lay it out for the record that it is a concern as presented also by the property owner. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any final questions or discussion by the commission? Legal counsel, do you have any other comments for us regarding that last comment, or is that, would you like us to continue just to deliberate?
The only comment that I would have is that the AT&amp;T tower is not before the commission today.
Right.
Nor should any of discussion pertaining to that tower be relevant. I'm not intimately familiar with the facts of that. However, the reason why American Tower was required to come before you this evening is because their conditional use permit was in question in terms of being terminated because of its term. And once a CUP is terminated, the city and staff in particular are able to impose new additional or even the same conditions of approval, which is what occurred here today.
Thank you. All right. No other further comments, questions? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation.
May I be a motion? I'll, I will move the recommended action.
Is there a second? Moved by Mr. Ledesma.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That brings us to informal discussion this evening. Any items for discussion? Thank you very much. All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn by Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Morzini. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Thank you very much. Good evening.